Seven o'clock call meeting order to stand for a pledge, please. Okay, you get the motion of the, accept the minutes of April 17th.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the April 17th meeting?
Set it.
Any discussions, any corrections? Very none? Motion approved. Get a motion to accept the financial report and payment of bills.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We've got a few minutes before the public hearing. Louis, you want to do those proclamations?
There's no question. The first proclamation is Tourism Month. Whereas the travel and tourism industry in Elton, Cecil County, and the state of Maryland is vital to our economic stability and growth and to our quality of life, and whereas every citizen benefits from our tourism assets and the revenue generated by tourism dollars, and whereas in 2012 tourism generated $134 million and more than 2,200 jobs in Cecil County and 12, I mean, excuse me, $20 million in state and local taxes, and whereas tourism revenue is generated without expense of providing services resulting in reduction of the burden placed on taxpayers, and whereas I call upon all citizens adopted state-plied in our town and county tourism attractions to celebrate the significant positive impact that tourism dollars have on all of us. Now therefore, I Joseph, Elton's son, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Assistant Citizens of Cecil, of our county, our community, I'm sorry, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Tourism Month in the town of Elton and commend this observance to all our citizens.
All right, do our motion to accept the proclamation for Tourism Month.
Some move, sir.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The proclamation, next proclamation is Kids to Parks Day. Whereas the National Park Trust has designated May 18th, 2013, as the third annual National Kids to Parks Day, and whereas National Kids to Parks Day empowers and encourages children and their families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it's important to introduce a new generation to our national park to offset the decline in park attendance over the last decade, and whereas we should encourage children to lead more active lifestyles other than back to using the childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol, and whereas National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse people participation, and whereas the National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I Joseph, Elton's son, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim, proclaim National Kids to Parks Day, that will be May 18th, and encourage residents of Elton and the surrounding area to make time on May 18th, 2013, to take children to their lives, children in their lives, I guess, to a neighborhood, state, or national park where the first day of May.
Do our motion to accept the proclamation for Kids Days to the Parks.
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
There are no national parks in Cecil County but Elton, I mean, not Elton, but Cecil County has one state park, which is Elton X State Park, which is 2,188 acres, and it's a very nice park up in there, many times. Next proclamation, National Bike Month, busy month of May. A proclamation by the Mayor Commissioners of the town of Elton joining the Bicycle and Safety and Education Association and the League of American Bicycles in celebrating the month of May 2013 as National Bike Month. Whereas Americans in record numbers are turning to bicycle, turning to the bicycle as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, as well as an excellent form of recreation, and whereas millions of Americans can experience the joys of bicycling this May through educational programs, commuting events, trail work days, helmet promotions, charity rides, and whereas bicycle clubs, schools, local departments of parks of recreation, police departments, hospitals, corporations, and city groups throughout our state will be promoting bicycling as a wholesome activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to automobiles during the month of May, and whereas the Mayor Commissioners of the town of Elton emphasize and encourage increasing use of non-motorized transportation in its many forms and functions. Now therefore, the Mayor Commissioners of the town of Elton do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Bike Month. The town of Elton encourage residents of Elton and the surrounding area participation in bicycling activities.
Okay, do our motion to accept proclamation for the National Bike Month.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That concludes the proclamation for this year.
Okay, public hearing, ordinance two dash twenty-three, one three, housing for the elderly and handicapped. Present for introduction. Jeanne.
Good evening. This ordinance contains the Elton zoning ordinance, and I'll read the resolution for you. For the purpose of amending the Elton zoning ordinance, Article 12, supplemental abuse regulations, section 29, housing for the elderly or handicapped, 1.430. Whereas Article 11 dash E, Constitution of the United, of the state of Maryland, Article 23A, annotated code of Maryland, Land Use Article, annotated code of Maryland, and the Charter and Code of the town of Elton provide the authority under which the Mayor and Commissioners may adopt, repeal, and/or amend the ordinances of the town of Elton. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners adopted the Elton zoning ordinance on November 8th, 1994, amended from time to time thereafter, and whereas Mayor and Commissioners have determined that the here and after stated amendments pertaining to the minimum road frontage is appropriate to facilitate development of property unable to meet the current minimum road frontage standard, and whereas the Mayor and Commissioners have further determined that the reference to husband and wife, quotes, in the current section is not consistent with the Civil Marriage Protection Act of 2012, and have amended the reference for legal consistency, and whereas the Elton planning commission has reviewed and recommended the here and after stated amendments to the Elton zoning ordinance following their public hearing held on April 8th, 2013, said public hearing being held in performance of the requirements of the Elton zoning ordinance, Article 19. Now therefore, the Mayor Commissioners of the town of Elton hereby ordain that section one, the Elton zoning ordinance, Article 12, section 29, housing for the elderly or handicapped, 1.430, shall be repealed, and section two, the Elton zoning ordinance, Article 12, section 29, housing for the elderly or handicapped, 1.430, shall be reenacted, and shall read as follows. Elton zoning ordinance, Article 12, section 29, housing for the elderly or handicapped. And what I'm going to do is just read the parts that were amended of the ordinance. Under 1D, it originally read families where either the husband or wife is 62 or more years of age. That will be corrected to read families where either partner is 62 or more years of age, where the term partners refers to lawfully married individuals.
If it's lawfully married, how do we eliminate the word husband and wife and get partner? I don't know whether you know that now I know its language.
I think it's to be neutral with respect to whether they were.
Is it common law?
It is gender neutral.
But husband and wife is not?
We changed it to partners instead of husband and wife.
I will. But husband and wife is not gender neutral?
I believe it's same-sex marriage is what they're talking about.
We can talk about this forever. In other words, you could have two people that are not necessarily legally married. Am I correct?
No, they have to be married.
No, it's.
But they can be the same gender.
Okay.
The other amendment is.
Excuse me, what did, what was the statement again? If it's the same gender, what statement did you read? It's husband and partner?
We're going to strike the husband or wife and replace that with the word partner.
Okay.
Is 62 or more years of age, and then clarify it by saying where the term partners refers to lawfully married individuals.
Thanks.
Okay, and then same article in section number four, under the section entitled Housing for the Elderly and Handicapped may be permitted as a special exception by the Board of Appeals in the second business district. There's two sections here for this use. The following standards shall apply. This is under number four, where it says minimum road frontage is 150 feet, that is stricken and replaced with 100 feet. Just reducing it by 50 feet. The minimum road frontage. The planning commission at the regular meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2013, recommended approval of the amendments for this ordinance.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against this change to ordinance two dash two oh one three, housing for the elderly and handicapped? Okay, carry none, and this public hearing is now closed. All right, we got a motion for, for introduction purposes only.
I'll make a motion for introductory purposes only for ordinance two dash 2013.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, those places that might be retroactive are people, you may not know this, have they made changes in their language to accept the term that you just said, man and partner, woman and partner, or do you know? Because it's something that's coming down the road, so I don't know what's already existing somewhere, if they are changing their language for that, even though people currently live.
Yeah, the recommendation was made by the town administrator because he saw that there may be discrepancy with our ordinance and the state law.
State law, yeah.
Yes, the new state law.
That is a good question, whether they've already conformed to that or not on all the, on these new projects coming up, on the senior housings.
Well, not necessarily new projects, but current projects.
Right, exactly right.
And this just has to do with how we regulate them. This is our, for our regulations.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you, Jeanne. Okay, Mr. Batrel, YMCA, George?
Chair or stand?
You can sit, relax.
Hold mic towards you, please, George. Thanks. You can pull a good break, so I'll take care of it.
All right. And then Michelle likes me, wants me on my front on TV. Is this my good side? I guess I'm here requesting a project that we started looking at back in the end of 2009, and that is the YMCA hooking up to, to public sewer. Currently, we are on septic at the Y, and I think everyone here in the room understands our current condition with our septic field. We continue to see more and more traffic in the Y. As we have expanded our programs and activities and our facilities over the past few years, it's really putting a burden on our current septic system. And so I think right now we are really, for the wise, long-term and short-term viability, public sewer is something that we are in dire need of. We are being monitored by the health department on those wells currently, so we just, we have made alterations and repairs to those wells to, to keep the facility functioning, but again, we don't know how much longer those wells will continue to, to function in the capacity to, to keep the YMCA basically open. So we've come back to, I've come to the mayor and the commissioners to see if it's a possibility that we revisit this project. We've had some positive discussions recently with the state highway administration in, in permits and other things that were seen to be a stumbling block in the past. Artesian has verbally committed to grant the line for the project, so essentially, I believe we're at a point where it's really in the hands of the mayor and the commissioners to determine at what point the, the project will go forward, if it will go forward at all. I will also say that I have applied for grant funds through MDE to help assist in the cost, particularly the hookup fee for the town, and I want to reiterate that we are not asking for a handout. We understand that there's $125,000 hookup fee. We're willing to pay that fee. We also realize that we are out of the town limits, and we realize that we will be paying double the rate. Currently, we use about five, we'll be, we will be using about 5,000 gallons of sewer a day, and we understand we'd be paying the double rate for that. And furthermore, we understand that we will also be responsible getting to that line from our property when the time occurs.
Did we have a problem one time, Louis, or something about one piping or something we had that was unconfirmed who belonged to?
Originally, when the town initiated this discussion with the YMCA, it was part of a project for us to realign our discharge from the state highway garage on Route 7. Instead of going under the twin bridges, actually realigned it to go down 279, which was a gratuitous event for the YMCA to connect into that system. At that point in time, the four-inch line that exists currently to allow water to be distributed to Route 7 property, including the state highway garage, that line was owned by the county, and we were working, we started out working with the county. The county subsequently sold all its water assets to Artesian Water, Maryland, so it was now Artesian Water, Maryland's property, not the county's property. The Artesian had attempted to transfer that line in one of their agreements with Bell Hill to the town. However, the, there's no permit that the state highway or Cecil County has in its records to indicate that that line was lawfully permitted by the state highways in their right of way. The town declined to accept the, that four-inch line because it's not permitted. I think the Dan and George and a few others had met with the county, I'm not, sorry, the state highway, and they were researching whether it could be permitted by the, the state highway, but have not received any confirmation from the state highway that they would permit it to be in their right of way, yet I think we're working towards that goal.
I think that's what held us up in the past was just how we could permit that line, the four-inch line. So, or they are working towards that right now? Have any, has anyone received?
I don't know. I know that the state highway has indicated that it is working towards that goal, but I don't know how progressive that has been. George may know.
I had an opportunity to sit down with, with the state at two meetings, and actually met with Barry Clothier out of Chestertown, and again, I'm not going to say they're 100% committed, but they are, it was very favorable in the discussion that they believed that they could permit that line and they would permit the project. Now, we don't have that in writing as of yet, but we're working on getting that in writing that would allow that line to be, essentially be the permit necessary, as Minister George had mentioned, and allow that line to be ascertained by the town.
That's what was mentioned the last time we spoke, was identifying that line and whose, whose ownership, and that's where we're, that's where we stopped it.
Correct.
So, I don't know whether you know, that's why we didn't pursue it any further.
Yes. Okay. It's a, the, the situation got a lot more murky when the county transferred that line to Artesian, essentially. But given the situation that we have with our septic wells, we, we simply have, we, I mean, I had to get the state to come to the table in order to try to get some progress moving on getting that line permitted, because we, again, we, we understand we're in borrowing time with our current, current septic wells.
Now, how could the county have transferred that without a permit?
That, that's a good question.
Do you have any kind of timeline as to when they may expect to possibly grant you or favor?
Quite frankly, I was hoping to have that letter in, in Louis's hand before I arrived here tonight.
But you are in the process of trying.
But yes, we are. And the grant that I apply for is time-sensitive, and of course, we understand that a project isn't going to happen tomorrow, that it could, it's many months down the line in terms of getting everything together that's necessary in bidding out the project. What the MDE is asking from me is some type of timetable that they feel comfortable with in order to grant me those funds.
So we still need to find out about the permit of the line, and we need to put up.
The line is not ours. The line wouldn't be permitted to the town of Elton anyway because we're the owners, never have been. So it had to be, if it, as it exists today, we have to be permitted to Artesian Water, Maryland, the owners of that, that line. So I don't know what will happen beyond that. I think the YMCA, particularly in this particular case, actually needs to know if the town will accept sewer discharge from the YMCA facility, and once that, once the town will accept it, it's a matter of the methodology to have that done. But the first thing you had to do is, does the town go accept it? Of course, obviously, the town has accepted sewage from out-of-town facilities before, precedence being set for the state highway, the force main, where outside of town and they discharged wastewater to the town through the, through a force main that goes under twin bridges and discharge in New Orleans for a matter. So we have precedent-setting situation with them, so would be extraordinary in, in the case of YMCA being out of town to accept their sewage. And I don't believe they'll generate sewer that would overtax or compromise our collection system from that one facility.
But the big problem that we're having is, we want to accept it, but we can't because we don't know who owns the line. That's the bottom line.
Not necessarily. That's one method by which sewer could reach the town of Elton. If the YMCA wanted to hire a contractor and add all the plans and approvals and permits that could generate your own force main and run it from the YMCA facility and discharge to our wastewater collection system on 545 Blue Ball Road, there's no need for that line. But I think the use of the line was a method by which the permit had originally come up with, possibly saving some of that construction and permitting, because you can use an existing line. There's already a ten-inch line there that serves water there that could be tapped into and achieve the same purpose of generating or providing water to Route 7 and Route 40 properties as well as the SHA.
So you're talking the second option there.
Where the four-inch line came from. I mean, you don't need a four-inch line, you build another one. I mean, yeah, but that may be complicated because I don't know the reasons there.
Yeah, but there's a lot of cost in building that new line also, and one already exists. And we have someone from Artesia here.
It doesn't exist in terms of being sewer. It exists with respect to water, but it can.
But I think what held us back before was this permit, and it looks like they're working towards getting the permit. If I might ask, being Joe Donanzio is in the audience from Artesia, do you have any other information you could provide to us for, about this permit?
Well, actually, just to reconfirm what George had said, which is, the county was never able to locate any original permit, neither SHA, but there was recent meetings with Barry Clothier at SHA, and he's indicated that they were willing to permit the line. We accepted it as is with the purchase, and it was just part of our arrangement with the county when we acquired their assets. So, once we have that in hand from the county, as we've said, and as, as George said, we're more than willing to complete the transaction, transfer it over so that the Y can move forward with, using that for wastewater, tying into the town system for the water interconnection at the other nearby main.
Which has plenty of capacity to hold that.
Yeah, it's just moving from the four-inch over to the, to 10 or 12.
So we really need that line?
It's a more complicated project than simply the line, because there are pumps that have to overcome head and, and other hydraulic issues that are generated. The pumps at the state highway garage are designed for a two-inch force main. By combining it with another force main or another discharge point of the YMCA could potentially, could be evaluated in terms of, do they have to be replaced? We don't know that person. So there's a lot more to it than just a line. There's a lot of elements. But what we did, we stopped all that when the, when the line went out of the county's hands and went to Artesia, and we couldn't find any permits, so not authorize any additional engineering costs for this evaluation.
At this point.
It's not a simple matter here.
At this point, how, how could we move forward if we were, you know, considered Elton?
How could we move forward? It depends. How, how you want to handle it.
Well, considering.
Obviously, the town of Elton would not necessarily spend funds to provide sewer services.
Well, they're not requesting that. They're requesting.
It can't be our money to do it. We basically could cooperate, but I think the first thing you need to know is, would the town of Elton accept sewer discharge from YMCA? I mean, that's your first goal. I mean, I would do anything as the administrator of the town unless the town were agreed to do that. Once you agree to do that, and it's a matter of, as I said, going through the methodology to have it done, you have to work through that.
You know, we've done it before. I don't know what the board of commissioners can do it, and to help them, and then I guess the owners will be back on, once we accept it, will be back on SHA or someone to get that line or, or build another line, I guess, to be able to get you hooked up.
Exactly.
There's a, they have to, the YMCA, they have a current plan also, because they have to build facilities on their site in order to discharge to, whether it's a four-inch line or any other line. So, I mean, they have construction on site.
Well, they've, they've met with people and they understand what they have. That's not for us to decide what they're planning on doing. That's up to them, and they've had their meetings to do that.
Yeah, we have, we had the engineering for the project completed back in 2010 on our property to get to the line, so that, that engineering portion, portion of it is complete. And also note that we do currently utilize the town of Elton's water. So we are on water. Back when the Y was built, back in, or constructed, those lines were put in back in 94, we, we were able to hook up to the town for water, but the line, the sewer line there wasn't big enough, and it didn't have the capacity at, by Blue Ball Road to handle the sewer at the time, and therefore, the septic wells were put in rather than water, I mean, rather than, than the, than the sewer system, hooked to the sewer system. But that force main, I believe, was upgraded at Blue Ball would allow for this type of system now.
All right, so we have, if I was agreeable to do, accept the sewer from them, then we do that, and he has to move forward with his project. So that's what we all have to decide if you want to do that.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Motion, second on the floor?
I think you should reply the motion to accept it if it's delivered.
If it's delivered.
Not that we're going to do it. The fact is, we'll provide a means for it to be discharged to our system, but they have to supply the infrastructure, because the infrastructure can be very expensive.
I was going to say, that's the part that I would agree with, based on the cost of care, what would be incurred by you guys. The town of Elton, before we talked about this, was trying to help you with some funding, and, but we couldn't use taxpayers' dollars to help fund your organization. So I'll be willing to accept the sewer based on expense causes you guys are carrying, or, you know, you guys are taking care of it.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
You with that, George?
Keep us, keep us informed how you make it out.
All right, thank you.
May I ask, even though after the vote was taken, what the motion is again, because, what was it?
We're going to accept the sewer if it's able to get to us.
I got it. You get it?
Yeah, I don't want to intervene there. I'm just going to make sure we're on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paragon Engineering?
They're not here.
They're not here?
That was canceled and rescheduled for the June 12th.
That was canceled and rescheduled for the June twelve.
Okay, Lewis.
Pursuant to the Elton Recreation Community Center, the architectural services provided by Park Design Group, originally for an eighteen thousand square foot facility, it's became to a twenty-one thousand square foot facility. And the Park Design Group has requested a change order in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars in addition to their current contract, in order to provide the services necessary for this expanding facility. It's presented to the board tonight for acceptance or rejection. I'll be willing to do it. And then I'll have to get the A I A documentation from Park Design Group to amend the contracts out of that. But the change order for nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right, a motion to accept Mark Clark's change order for the flex facility.
I have a comment that I would like to make during my report, so I would ask that we hold off on this, based on information that I'm going to give. Can we do that?
No, it's fine.
If you don't have a motion, that's fine.
One second.
All right. And is anybody agreeable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to mention a couple things real quick. Under my report, it's not really there, it's not really agenda item. Mr. Hanley asked me to announce that Sunday, May twelve through Thursday, May sixteen, the town would be conducting its fire hydrant testing. They do this at night, usually six, between eight P M and six A M, and they're going to do it over the town. Mr. Hanley asked me to make this announcement and to urge people who have discolored waters, a result of all this, not to dry it out, contact us and we'll give an iron out or whatever is necessary in order for that laundry to be safe in the event that it's discolored. The other item is, the board is well aware that the Hermanage wall was damaged and removed by the Department of Public Works, and the insurance company did pay us the amount, fourteen thousand some dollars in order to have it reconstructed. And the contractor's been notified and expected to be on site on May fifteenth to reconstruct that wall and to point the other wall. And that will be at the expense of the, is that Nationwide?
Nationwide.
Nationwide Insurance Company, but they're compliments. That's all I have.
All right, old business, only thing I had was, again, that, the light on the Route Forty. They did finally figure it out.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Did you hear the video?
No, yeah, but there's also, I really never noticed myself going through there. There are cameras up there, right at the intersection there.
Oh, okay.
Two cameras, and one camera was all centered, and it was giving false readings and saying that there was traffic in that turn lane. So they readjusted it, and I checked it out a couple times, and it's, it's working now. So that, it was fixed, so we got that straightened out. That's the only thing I have. Mary Jo?
I do not have any old business.
Earl, any old business?
I have no old business.
All right. Charles, anything?
But, yes.
All right. The only thing I have, new business. I received a letter from Elton Middle School. They are looking for a donation. Apparently, they are, their team, the Elton Middle School Destination Imagination Team, they won second place in the state competition and have been invited to global finals in Knoxville, Tennessee. And they've worked together for the past six years and trying to make it to the global finals, and they're excited about it. And in order to attend, we need to raise enough money to cover our registration fee. Our goal is to raise forty-three hundred dollars. If there's any way the town of Elton would make a donation to help us get there, we'd greatly appreciate it. I checked with Steve. I would recommend, if we could, give him a hundred dollars to get there to Knoxville, if that's up to the board, if you want to.
It's fine, Amy. It's fine.
You got a motion? I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we send a donation of a hundred dollars to Elton.
In a second? Okay. I'll hear in a second, then. Motion failed. Okay. Mary Jo, new business?
I don't have any new business.
Earl?
There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight, and I'll try to keep this as brief as I can, but, new business, as much as I hate to bring up issues about taxes and the recreation center in the town of Elton, everyone knows I have a passion about the recreation center. Everyone knows, since I've been on the board, I've always pushed for getting a recreation center built. When I say "me," "we." And we've come to a point where, if the board agrees with me, I figure this will be a way where we wouldn't have to raise taxes or cut jobs. I'm going to read something that I read, someone gave me after our work session. Last week, we talked about this. We're short on the budget. So I'm going to ask the town board members if they would take one of the, one million of our, one point five that we designated for our recreation center, and put back into the general fund to help offset the physical budget for two thousand and fourteen. Take five hundred thousand and still keep the process going for the land, the surveys. I think we spent a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars so far. Use the five hundred thousand to offset the cost that we've already carried for that property. But I want to still keep the option open for the recreation center, because it is a passion that I have for the town, not just for the town, but for the children, the citizens of Elton. For that, I'd like to say that I need the support from the board for that. I know we're around a million dollars short of the budget. I know I asked Steve about this, but, I mean, I will ask Steve about a million dollars. That would probably help us out for this year, right? The key thing is, where do we go forward on this, so that we can keep the fund where we won't go behind, below. I recommend that we've got to start looking at developers, businesses, and making it a little bit more feasible and operational for them to come into the town of Elton. All I hear is complaints about we're making it so hard for them to operate or even come into the town of Elton. I don't know all the answers for that, but we've got to do anything we can to start occurring cost, or recruitment cost, instead of just taking and taking and taking. So my point is to take the one point million, put back in general fund, use the five hundred thousand to offset the cost. Now, on that note, someone gave me an article. I had no clue about this until after, and I commend this person for writing this, "Elton residents have already received an increase in taxes through a substantial increase in water and sewer rates. Now, Elton Financial Director Stephen Repole warns substantially cost in our police pension contribution and healthcare cost increase coming in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen." This is the same issue many municipalities are facing. Because they avoid the tough negotiation and didn't address the cost, why can't the one point five million plus recreation center project be stopped? Why not work with the Y M C A on the youth program? Do we need a new jail? This is, someone wrote this, and I didn't know that, and I didn't have that idea, that the person who wrote that come into this meeting. But to address that, George Pastor was here. I can tell you, back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, we discussed partnering up with the Y M C A. Y M C A is an entity of their own. They're not taxpayer dollars of, your taxpayer dollars. We can't dictate to them what they can do with the Y M C A. We asked to partner up with them, and it was an option. But there's programs they run that they need to get paid for, paid for, and the programs we run. That's just to answer this statement this guy put in the paper. Costs would change if we dealt with the Y M C A. They would first have to annex into the town. We just can't start working with them and using funds to help the Y M C A. That was the other reason. The other reason was, we couldn't locate the line, who, the ownership for that. And that's one of the things I wanted to address when George was here. But again, from saying all that, I just need the support from the board to move one point, one million dollars over back into the fund to offset the budget for the fiscal years. But in return, there is a return. Any money that's saved for the year budget, I would like to put back into the community center fund or recreation facility. And the money saved from the refinancing of the loans, that I think Mary Jo, Commissioner Jablonsky mentioned, I would like to put that back into the funds to try to recruit what we're actually moving around, and trying to at least move the project forward by stopping it. Thank you.
Well, Steve, how's this? For number one, I think we have, we did this one point five by resolution, and we have to have, to undo the resolution, I believe, to do this, correct?
Well, without the, you gotta do that, I guess, without the new resolution with the lower dollar now, that's probably, you know, one and a half million. What do you expect that will be then? Reduce it to five hundred thousand. Because you have resolutions under, there will be a resolution if you were to, sure, because then the new resolution-
You can resolute anything you want.
The motion was made.
You should do it by resolution.
Have to by resolution.
Because you'll vote on a resolution to rescind the previous resolution. The, what I'm trying to understand from Commissioner Pinear, what we need to kind of understand here is that, is this, is your suggestion a recommendation for the transfer of the million dollars back to the general fund, to use that million dollars for subsidizing the fund balance?
Budget, yes.
So it'll be transferred to what's called undesigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance, excuse me. I haven't been to CPA school lately. But, and, and reduce the tax rate by, I don't know what that, nine cents, roughly nine and ten cents. It puts us in a curious position, because the, we've advertised the tax rate, and by law, we have to get two weeks' notice before a public hearing. I guess you could advertise it and reduce the amount. You know, I guess you could.
Yes, we can.
So when you have a public hearing, you could amend the ordinance for introduction to show a lesser rate. I don't think the taxpayers would protest having a lower rate. But the only thing we would caution you about is that, regardless of whether you do that or not, you would have not generated revenue in that fiscal cycle to offset that roughly two million dollar budget deficit between the revenue and the expenditure. So you're actually plugging a hole again, like you did the previous year.
And that's, I guess, that's what my concern was. I really like-
Then you'll get to a point where you need to still raise taxes, because you have generated a twelve million dollar government with only ten million dollars of revenue. You're just using more of your savings and offset that, that cost.
Yeah. I mean, I can definitely, I mean, I definitely can appreciate the thought and that went in, into, you know, what you presented. But just wanting, you know, again, get your opinion on that. Is that pretty much anything other than a Band-Aid at this point?
It has the effect of using more unassigned fund balance for the supplement here, because you're now putting a billion dollars more into the current balance of the unassigned fund balance. And again, by not addressing your property tax rate, though, it's just putting off what has to be addressed with the current year's revenue, not meaning current year's expenditure.
Right. So we still, we still have to-
We don't increase our savings account to-
We still have to face the fact that we need to find different ways-
Additional time.
Right, to generate revenue.
We do. And at our meeting last week, we realized that, and I believe Commissioner Givens made the statement, you know, we get hit with this the last minute. We need to do something about that. Well, we went through the whole budget last week. We cut a lot of things out, because originally, we started at nineteen cents, and it cut down. And we talked about looking over things. I think in July, as soon as the fiscal budget ends and you have the numbers for the year, we need to have a budget meeting the following month, and see what we've done, and again, look at where we need to save, and look through this, and see what we can do. And possibly quarterly, meet on this budget to discuss it, to see where we're at. So it's not, we're putting a Band-Aid on, or we're, you know, we're seeing where we, where we need to generate money and look for ways to generate additional dollars. Today, on the news, it said the housing market's going up. Ten percent across the country. Some states have a twenty percent increase. Let's hope it happens here and assessments go up. I mean, things are looking better, so we don't know what assessments will be in July. So I think it's something we have to keep track of all year long and not get hit with in May, when it's time to vote on a budget.
Well, actually, we do know what they'll be in July. We know in February.
Yeah, we knew that all-
Well, no, February for the next July.
For the next July. I mean, we know that. That's why we're doing a budget a year in advance.
Yeah, we've done a eleven percent hit from last year to this year.
Right.
The high yield tax rate actually rose, one of six oh nine, actually, with six cents. And that shows a decline, eleven, what's eleven percent decline in the assessment. So the billion seventy-nine million and change property that we apply our tax rate against will generate, using the constant tax rate, the same income if you raise it six cents over the current rate.
Right.
So that generates no additional revenue to offset that two million dollar deficit you have. So if you want to fill the hole in with your unassigned fund balance, is it unassigned? Unassigned fund balance, that's the same thing you did for the last several years.
Okay, but here's the point I'm making here. If we don't do it, and we continue with the recreation center, now, I don't, I'm not wanting to sit up here and look like a fool, not wanting to make any kind of adjustment whatsoever. Like I said, you get hit with this, even though we talked about it, talked about it the last couple of years. Yeah, I'm one of the ones that said, no, I don't want to raise taxes. I don't want it to raise water and sewer fees. Yeah, I'm one, because as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay extra. No, everybody else is the same way. But yes, we want the services. We want this. And I heard you say this at the work session. And plain and simple, I agree with you. We want the service, we pay for it. But yet, there are certain things that some people just can't do. If you're set on a set budget, you don't have no extra money, you can't keep taking and taking and taking. And that's what we're doing. Gas price went up, water and sewer price went up. And then what he talked about, we're not raising taxes. But, I mean, I don't want to raise taxes. So I'm saying, let's look at the other option. Let's not move forward with the, with the recreation center right now to put more cost into it. Let's move that back. And I was using a little common sense, basically. And based on what the gentleman in the word wrote in the paper, I said, that really sealed the deal for me of coming back and seeing what I said tonight. As much as I'm the last one in here, want to say that, probably. It's just that we have to do something in order to move forward. I asked about the hotel taxes. We have to go through the state and do such. Go through the state and do whatever we have to do. Raise the taxes, because the out-of-town people should be paying for the cost that we're now trying to absorb. And that's why I said, raise the hotel taxes as much as we can, or what's legal, and then go for it, and at least we can generate money there. And when I said that, I know we got kicked back on this and that. We need to find options. I asked the board. We all need to go out and find whatever we can, to see what we can do to bring, generate income into the town of Elton. Living here for fifty-six years, I love it. I know I've got family members, and I push this all day long, as far as how much passion I have for the town of Elton. Then I hear people talking about, well, I'm just going to move to so-and-so and move. Good, you go and find taxes are doubled. But yet, they're not helping themselves by moving to another state. They're finding out the same thing is across the board. So all I'm saying to is, we need to start, and when I say "we," I'm going to tell you, I'm one that don't have all the answers. And when I go out to the public and ask them for feedback, give me, I even ask my neighbors, what do you think we can do to save and raise the taxes? I got to hear it every day from my neighbors. Give me some ideas, because I don't have all the answers. And I'm going to sit here and say, I don't have all the answers. I look for the input from the, to the town citizens. And then, you know, that's basically the way I feel about this.
The thing that we need to know, I think the whole board needs to share at this point in time, is whether they want to proceed with the rec center at all at this point. I share your sentiments that this will increase the cost, not only for that service on a facility, which we don't know, we can't quantify the cost yet, but staffing and other operational costs. So you're elevating the expenditures in the future budgets by going through the project, but if you- but if you're pulling back, then I don't know what our obligation by contractual.
But Louis, if we have that 500,000, and I'm, and we're saying 200, approximately 200,000 has been used of that. So in the next, where are we at? We're in May, so we figure we have seven months left, well, we, it'll be 12 months for the fiscal year. But for moving forward with the recreation center, of what we're doing right now, is taking time. And, you know, just to put out the bids alone for the building is going to be several months. And so we still might be moving forward without that, and with the money that we have, so then we know exactly what we're up against. Not saying to stop it altogether.
No, no, I don't mean that, we're, we've contractually obligated ourselves.
Right.
For the work from the part design group, they're not going to forgive you on that contract.
No, 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 and I'm saying.
So you will have an end product in terms of bidding it out, but that's when your, your big expense will kick in, if you accept the bid and go forward with construction. You have the money to satisfy the contract.
Right.
But I, we need to know, you know, if the intent of the board is to proceed with construction of this or not, I mean, you know, I guess it's not something you're willing to do right now until you actually get some bids in front of you, but I kind of predict that they're going to be high.
Well, I want to commend Commissioner Piner because this was his doing, putting money aside again, so for somebody to bring it to the table, I think it would only be appropriate if it was him. So I appreciate you doing that, Earl. And I think it's, as much as I love kids, and I want to see a rec center, and a community center, and Parks and Rec is growing and they do a fantastic job, I don't want to see it end, but I think right now, to move forward this way, I think is a good call. That's my, my take on it.
Remember, the budget was developed kind of in effect backwards, some point we backed to, up to what we desire to be a percentage of the fund balance of the supplement year's budget, then the balance had to then come from the increased property tax rate. Now, if by freeing up the million dollars that is suggested here, that will then, of course, have more money to draw from, it will be less permanent tax rate, but it's just a, you know, a one or two-year fix, this is not a permanent fix. We would still be taking in revenue in the current year, less than our expenditure, we just have a larger pool of savings from which to draw to make the budget balance.
See, I see one of the things that myself and I think the rest of board members, we, we react to things real quick, and we want to go and, and do things right away, and all we got to raise taxes. Think of what we need to do before we have to do the last final thing. That's the bottom thing we need, sit down and, and brainstorm, figure out, what is your thought about this, or do you have any ideas? No, we don't have ideas, let's just go raise taxes. That's basically where we are at. I understand that we talked about two or three years ago, well, we're, we're keeping this constant yield the same, we, we might have to raise this later on in, in the next couple of years. I know that was said. And now that the time has come, have we done anything over the last couple of years to try to generate any extra money? No, we haven't sat there and had no work session, just to concentrate on generating money, income into the town of Elkhorn. Everything is, well, we can take out the general fund, take out the general fund. I already knew that, we talked about keeping the, the general, general fund to a certain amount, we looked at other municipalities nearby, states and towns, how they operate their budget, and keeping it 15 to 25%. Okay, so let's do it like them. We're not them, we need to concentrate on what we need to do for the town of Elkhorn. Everything's, oh, well, Pennsylvania pays all this amount of taxes, so let's raise it up to that. We're not like Pennsylvania, we've got to worry about the town of Elkhorn, and after all these years, I'm worried about the town of Elkhorn, not just what's northeast doing, or riding the sun, or how they doing this, we need to worry about Elkhorn. That's, that's one thing I need to, to say to the board, we need to concentrate on Elkhorn and not look at what Harvard Grace is doing. Sure, they got funding coming in from certain places, and they're putting money, we don't have that. I mentioned something about raising money through recreation, that we can't get grant money if we do that. So, okay, now we don't have, we're not pushing forward for the recreation center, will we still be able to, Louis, I'm asking this question, will we still be able to generate fund through the recreation center if we're not going after grant money? Remember, you made that statement?
Well, the premise under which the rec center was being developed way back when was to have a place for kids to go. And I think that if you charge kids to go there, you'll be a YMCA, and you had to have a membership essentially to go there. But the premise was to have children to go to a place and not have to pay.
Okay.
Because we were supplementing places that do.
And right now, if it rains right now, where would they go now?
They will go wherever their parents.
Right, we don't have a place, that's the point I'm making. All these years I've been here, yeah, Louis, all these years I've been here, we don't have a place for the kids or the citizens to go, get out of the wet, bad weather. And as a need, the need of town, oh yeah, we need this, we need this, we need to raise the taxes, but we need a recreation center. And that's the point I'm making, we need that, and I've been pushing for that, so.
There are grants out there for the recreation center, and we're doing everything right now to be able to apply for the grants. You have to have the design work, you have to have a shovel-ready project to apply for a grant. So we'll be able to do that and move forward, and who knows, we might have, you know, $2, $3 million in grant money for this center. So we need, we can move forward with that.
With, with all due respect to everything that's been said, I kind of take offense to the way, to the way I've just been addressed as the board, as to not, not have known that this was coming. Every, every time that we brought this particular subject up about the rec center, every single time, we knew that it was going to be an expensive process, we knew it was going to be an expensive project, yet we still went forward. We had all the information that we needed. Bringing to the table several different options to generate different revenues and, and, and different options for the town to beautify it, itself, and, and we moved on none of those I, I can't understand why this board keeps coming back to this point. One of the suggestions that I made is, is basically a real simple, to me, a, a simple concept. I mean, my suggestion was to, to put up a pole barn at this point, just for the kids or youth or elderly or whatever, just to get out.
That was.
And as we went forward, we sought out grants and expanded from there.
That, that's fine that you said that, Commissioner Hirsch, but that was not your idea, that was our idea, because it was the Elkhorn Christian Center that we talked about pole barn. Pole barn, that's not your idea, so stop making it sound like it was your idea, it was the board decided.
No, I'm, I'm not doing that.
So let's just get that clear.
No, Louis, let's get something clear, let, let's get something clear right away. I like the way you address everyone as you brought it out, and then you say, but the board. Now, I, I don't care if it's my idea, not, that's not the point. The point is that I was just bringing it up as we continued to discuss this expensive project, knowing that we never addressed it, addressed a constant yield rate, we nev, we just kept on adopting it, and all of this was coming. We, we don't need a fortune teller to see this, we had all the information laid out in front of us.
Okay, guys, we got, we got, I think we got a general discussion, we know what Earl's trying to get across to everybody, and we need to solve, figure out how we're going to work this out. And we need a resolution, and we can't get the resolution tonight. So the only thing we can do is draft up the resolution, and Steve will then, will have to work out the finances and see where we go with, with the situation here, and then come back and have the resolution approved or whatever, and go forward. There, is that acceptable? So everybody, we could do this all night, and I think we all know where, where we're going and what we need to do.
I think that's acceptable, as long as we make an effort of a very concentrated effort to figure out ways to generate income in this town, revenue in this town.
We discussed that last week about putting out RFPs to every contracted person we have in this town, from copiers to everything, and get quotes in here so we could save money some. We're a big business, the town of Elkhorn, and people would like to have us as a business.
All right, and we certainly can do that as soon as we get through next month, and then June or actually July, like you said, we could probably start working on it and coming up with some brainstorming and see where we can do that. And I think that should be our main priority right now this year coming.
Well said.
Yeah, well, I mean, there, there was good conversation on both sides, but we should finish predicament. And I still think, you know, I'm not the mayor, I'm not the commissioner, I don't handle the, the budget, but we should have been looking two or three years to where we are now. I don't think you can go year to year, year to year, and that's what we're in each year. Regardless of whatever change in it, there's always next year, whatever change you make, there's always next year. If you follow what I'm saying. But, see what happens.
Okay, so we have, Charlie?
Well, we have new business.
We have new business.
You know, you brought up the subject, of course, about helping out the middle school, and of course, children's always been my business, it's been dear, you know, we talking about giving them 100, and we, last year, simply said that we're going to have an annual scholarship for $500, and that doesn't even appear in the budget for next year. So you can't rob Peter to pay Paul on it.
It's in the budget.
It is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
For next year?
Whoa, it's now in for next year.
Pardon? I spoke with you the other day, you must make some changes with pencil.
It's now in for next year.
Must be a fly on the wall someplace, but you must say, it wasn't there a few days ago.
It was, that's correct.
The last concern I have is the workshops that we have, and the workshops started when Rob Walt was the mayor, and he's here now. And the workshops were times devoted when you couldn't discuss or do something out of the regular meeting. Now, again, I ask, who sets the workshop agenda?
The mayor would set it logically, because it's an open meeting group, open meeting to act, so the mayor.
Okay, fine, I understand that, and I'm, I'm not trying to pinpoint, now, we had somebody that's not going to be here tonight, you automatically said that it's going to be at the next meeting, evidently, he wasn't aware of it, neither were we. And I'm just trying to find.
Okay, 10:00 or 4:00, I suppose. Otherwise, you'd know it when I do it.
So whenever we see that workshop, it's the mayor.
You put it on there and I, the license.
I, we've, we've suggestions at meetings also for a workshop meeting.
And that was the opportunity that we had, when we first brought that up, if you're going to have a workshop, paper run around to say, is there anything you want to see on there? And, and not to look at that, I just want to know who sets the agenda, because often time, we have a lot of things, sometime we have little thing, sometime Peter doesn't know what Paul's doing, the left hand doing, what the right hand doing, I'm just trying to find out, sitting here as commissioner, who sets the agenda for the workshop?
For clarification, as you all talk during your meeting, I'm taking notes, and I'll start adding things to the upcoming agendas, workshop or a public meeting. The Friday prior to, or Thursday prior to a meeting, I send it to Mayor Fasana for his approval. Bottom line, Mayor Fasana approves the final version of the agenda.
Okay, that's fine, that I, that I know that he approved the final thing. And, and certainly tonight, I would like to see it part of the minutes that, that I do with Mary Jo, is that you need to have periodic reading about the budget, because, you know, I'll back to the wall, there's information you don't know, there's information you know, but if you're getting information periodically from Steve, who handles all of that, at least we have an update, may not be what you want to hear, but an idea of what's going on. Thanks.
Nothing, okay. Dave?
Excuse me? The, you had put the motion on hold.
Yeah.
For the $9900 adjustment to the part design group contract. And we held, the board held it, and, and so he had his business. I need a response to part design group about that adjustment, or that gain work. Whether you vote for or against it, I have to know.
Hopefully, move forward with that, because it's, with the 500,000 would be to incur any of all the costs, that was still being used for the recreation center. So I would make a motion that we go in and approve it.
All right, have a motion, we'll have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Those opposed? Motion carried. All right, Dave.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening.
All right, Dave Ford, I 115 Osage Street, behind American Home and Hardware. I got some, I got quite a few things to talk about, some of which got added to the list hearing this quite interesting discussion this evening. With respect to the very last topic you put up, maybe you guys are thinking about it the wrong way, possibly, instead of continuing to go to the general fund for this rec center, which I understand is a passion of yours, I would make two comments, one of which is, not all Elkhorn residents would use it, but maybe there's a way to hold fundraisers approach, you know, when I go down Howard Street in the summertime, I see lots of baseball teams playing, maybe there's a way to approach those organizations saying, hey, let's try and fundraise to help this out. You know, I don't know what the timeframe is, I don't know where it's located, so I know I'm really speaking out of my lane here, but maybe looking at it in, in that way, saying, if this is something the community wants, maybe we can't pay for it all right now, but maybe we can get the ball down the road a little more by, by doing a fundraiser, maybe put it, you know, something in the Cecil Bay, you know, maybe have fire truck races down, down Main Street here, I don't know. All right, so I would just, I would just comment on it. Second thing is with respect to raising taxes, and somebody made these, I think it was Mary Jo made the comment about housing assessments going up. In a way, I hope so, because I think my property is undervalued, but I generally don't hope so, because of what I'm already paying, my finances are pretty tight. And I, I will also tell you that property is not moving in my neighborhood at all. I, there's properties there that have been for sale for three years plus, so please keep that in mind. Next thing, it's, the next thing is a little thing, but it's something I've, I've observed. I know that there's people come around and pick up the brush that's left on the street, you know, clippings and then tree limbs and stuff like that. I don't know what their schedule is, but I do know that there was a big pile in front of Bobby Ann's for three months, and it wasn't picked up. It was recently picked up, but there's another one, it's been at least two or three weeks, maybe longer, next door to Bobby Ann's. So I, you know, I don't know what the schedule is, I don't know how to find out about it, but, but I would appreciate if, if someone would look into that. Next thing is, in my neighborhood, I have a lot of transient traffic, I'm seeing a lot of open carry. So if, Sir Chief Ryan, if you would have your folks look for that. I'm not opposed to a guy having a beer when he mowed his lawn, but this is not that, this is going over to the oceanic, coming back with bags of stuff, and not even caring, just, you know, staggering down the street with, with a natural light, and that appears to be the brand of choice. I think last year I came to you about the concrete wall across from my house, there were three signs that were put up there, one sign and pole is completely missing, one sign is, the wind has ripped completely through it, so it's a half a sign now, and the pole is all bent, the third sign is still there. If whoever was responsible for putting the signs and the poles there, if they would revisit that and, and put more substantial poles, because I think people were trying to yank them out, so I would ask that that be addressed. The biggest issue that I'm here about, let me just start from the beginning, saying that I'm a big property tax guy. I, I believe that, you know, man's home is his castle, man's property is his, and how the state deals with the individual and the property he owns governs how the state deals with the individual, with everything else. So I'm a real big property guy. However, last Friday, my wife was out on the deck, and she noticed all this smoke coming down, and she says, oh Dave, we got to go look at that. And I said, I don't want to go down, you know, it's just somebody burning trash. Well, it wasn't somebody burning trash, it was the, one of the structures where George's bar and all was going up in flames. We drove down there, fire was going through the roof. I learned from the Cecil Bay that there was two fires in two days, the second one is proven to be arson. So I, I do have some questions for, I don't know, if either Mr. George or Mr. Wilson, or both, and I would like a written response. One is, I don't know what the procedures are for condemnation, but that property has been vacant since I have been here, which is 2005. The Cecil. The Cecil Wig says it's been vacant since two thousand. I know at least two years ago, people, there were some people that were dragged in there and they were raped. It is a safety hazard. I also have read that Cecil Bank owns the property. What is Cecil Bank planning on doing with the property? Is the property insured? I don't know, but it seems to me that you guys should have the power to be, to have Cecil Bank sitting where I'm sitting, asking, what are you going to do with the property? You know, if you don't do something with it pretty soon, we're going to condemn it and we're going to raise it. Raise meaning level. Okay? So, you know, I don't like doing this, you know, I'm a big property rights guy, but this is, this is now, it's beyond just a blight, it's a health hazard, it really is, and it's going to continue unless something is done. So, I'm asking for a written response either from the commissioners, or from Mr. George, or from Mr. Wilson, or all of the above. And last thing, with respect to what I just heard, I would urge you guys not to go down the path of the Cecil County Commissioners. They have their own patent place going on with arguing with each others, and it's gotten ugly, I've seen it. And I told them, when I've gone in front of them, I don't care about their patent place. You know, I'm here to talk about certain issues. So, I would recommend if Commissioner Givens has a question about how the agenda is written, I'm sure you guys have rules by which you govern yourselves, put it in the rules of, you know, how the agenda is developed, so that he knows. Okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some things are developed, it's just, out of time, you just change the way it's presented. So, I know what was developed, and your point's well taken, but you got to follow through.
Right. Well, that way, next time, you don't have to ask us, you know, how did this come about? You know, if there's a process, you put it in there, everybody knows.
Bob?
Well, Blitzenberg, one oh five, want to help tonight. I've got some suggestions that might be good, maybe not, might be criticism also. I want to commend Earl and Mary Jo for what you're saying about that, and please don't let Louis influence you on this decision. He lives in, he doesn't pay town taxes, the rest of us all do. So, don't let him influence, stick to your guns. In a way, there's an article about Rising Sun with their meetings and so forth, and it's the same thing we have here. Your workshops, the regular public cannot speak, same way with a town meeting, we can't speak when you're having your agenda. Afterwards, there's many issues that we've been able to put some input on, but we can't make any, say anything until afterwards in the comments. Right now, in this audience right here, right now, some of the discussions you've had here, you've got an ex-mayor, an ex-town commissioner, and the ex-town administrator, and these guys have got an awful lot of input that they could be coming up with some ideas in some of your discussions, I think, maybe I'm wrong. I think that ought to be changed. Several meetings, we're talking about budgets and so forth and how money gets out of hand. Several meetings ago, you proved a hundred thousand dollars to KCI for testing of wells at Elk Landing. Seven Trent-located wells within the town limits, several months ago, if you all remember that, in the town limits, the old wells that are there. And I think Mr. Reed probably could tell you where those wells are, well, he was administrator, he would know where those wells are. Fifty thousand dollars, you voted on to sweeten the pot for the bridge over Duller Avenue for eight hundred thousand dollar funding for the bridge assignment. That was suggested by Mr. George to sweeten the pot to the county. Where was that budgeted? Where did that, when was that ever budgeted? I know you're not going to answer me, but I'm just wondering where that was budgeted, that came out of the general fund or where it came from? That same meeting, there's a question about the sidewalk in front of Methodist Church on Main Street. Couldn't do anything with that because it wasn't in the budget, because it cost eighty thousand dollars. It's been brought up numerous times, when is it going to be put into budget to repair that sidewalk? It's an old brick sidewalk and somebody sooner or later, one of the older people in that church is going to fall. Whose fault's that? Getting back to the budget, I don't know whether you can postpone your vote on the budget or it's set in gold or what. Your budget's set, your meeting for May the eighteenth or fifteenth, and that's when the public has a right for their opinion. You can't pick up the budget until May the tenth, so that gives you actually three, four working days that somebody has to go over that. The citizen can look at that budget and go over it. That's not a whole lot of time to go over a budget when it's eleven, I don't know what it's going to be, probably twelve million dollars this year. So, I don't know whether you can vote on that budget the following meeting, May the twenty-ninth, I don't know how you've got that set, it has to be done at a certain time or not, but I think that ought to be looked into.
Could I comment on that? I don't like to influence the board, but the law predicts that that'll be a public hearing on the fifteenth, and it's introduced, it's not adopted, it's not adopted until June fifth. They can adopt it on June fifth as presented or as amended, just for your clarification.
If I remember correctly, any time you had a public hearing on it, it was voted on right after that.
They vote to introduce it. The adoption will be, if you look at, we did the same thing last year.
I'm corrected, that answers my question.
It's adopted on the sixth of June.
Getting back to the budget, I don't know how well you all go over the budget to actually sit down and look at it for department, 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 department. Last year's budget was eleven million, six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. The safety, the public safety was five million, seven ninety-eight, that's half of your town budget, one half of it. That seems like it's an awful lot of money for one department, for one department. When I've asked one of the commissioners if he knew what the salaries were of your department hedge and so forth, and he said he didn't have any idea what they were.
And that was me, and your question was basically that some of the officers made over a hundred thousand dollars. I got the paper from Steve Ropole, and none of the officers doing that particularly here made over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the Freedom Information Act I had there, I can show it to you, was eighty-five thousand plus. Came out to a total of most of them, three or four of them at a hundred thousand. I'll bring it and show it to you.
I would gladly do.
Got that. In the county, this is the only board that is paid. None of the rest of the councilmen, mayors or councilmen in Cecil County are paid councilmen, whatever it may be. They all oversee different departments, whether it be public works, planning, zoning, police unit, whatever it may be. And they do all this without pay. Now, I was told, whether I'm right or not, that in the town charter, the town councilmen do not have to oversee a department. But I think it'd be good, I'd look into that, because if each one of you oversee a department, you'd know exactly what's going on and where the money's going, how much money can be saved or how much money has to be spent. This is going to be a good one, it's really going to shock you here, I'm going to leave Mary Jo and Earl out of this one. Maybe instead of waiving, maybe instead of waiving the major facility charges on some of this profit housing that you've got, you ought to waive your salaries of ten thousand and nine and apply that to the budget, but these two seem like they want to start to save money. So, I think it'd be a good idea, maybe the other three, you ought to waive your salaries and help pay this deficit down. Everyone in the county or in the country, they've got tax increases, whether it be federal, state, or whatever it may be, and most people that are on fixed incomes cannot afford more and more and more taxes, whether it be water, whether it be gasoline, or whatever it may be. There's a lot of people right here in this town that are working on strength. A lot of your landlords in town have older people working, are living from them, and they can hardly afford to pay their rents, and these people are on social security and have worked all their lives. So, anything you can do, not to raise these taxes, or at least lower them or do something, because there's too many people with fixed incomes that are actually struggling. By the way, that was my neighbor, Dick Lemon, right next door to me, that wrote that, and I had nothing to do with that letter that he wrote, he wrote that on his own. Because Dick worked in Howard Grace for many, many years.
And I'm going to respond to one question, and the mayor tell you, and that was my opinion, and I just told him yesterday, and he told you the same thing, I'd be willing to waive what expense money I get. So, it's not like, you know, you don't look at yourself being a part of the process.
I know, we've talked about that.
No problem.
We've talked about that. Well, maybe you can put that in the form of motion in the next meeting that you're going to waive your salary.
I have no problem with that.
All right, that's it. Well, one more thing. Well, this has got some bearing on some things. And this came from the chief of police in Northeast, it's no problem to tell you that. I asked him how he handled their homeless issue. He said, we don't have one in Northeast, we don't have one. We don't have the Panhitters on the street, because I don't want them downtown in my town, taking people, going into restaurants, begging for money. If I see a tent or anything that looks like their home is living in any place in town, I go to the property owner, ask him to give me a letter for permission to evict the people from his property. He said, I go there with that letter, with a letter from the town, from him as the chief of police, give him three days, if they're not going, he arrests them, they're out of there. So, it can be done with this, some of this homelessness. You had it right here, Tent City was down here in Marina Park for how long? And they left a heck of a mess, and you got to come into town, Town Public Works were cleaning that mess up, because it was a disaster riding down Route forty to see that. And they did a good job of cleaning that up.
Thank you. Okay, hearing nothing else, have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.